Go ahead and begin. Let me check with our friends. Are you all set to go over there? Okay, well, let's begin. All right, well, um. Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the Carlisle Select Board's order. Um, and I would like to accept a motion for us to enter executive session. I move that the board enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General laws, Chapter 38, Paragraph 21A, Paragraph 2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for collective bargaining negotiations with CCA, Carlisle Teachers Association. As an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the town's negotiating position, and I move that the board enter executive session under purpose seven to review the draft executive session minutes of August 31, 2021, and to determine whether those minutes are ripe for release in compliance with the open meeting law. To invite. Okay, and to return to open session for the purpose of announcing whether the executive session minutes are now ripe for release, and then to continue with the open session meeting. Second. We'll call vote. Arnold I.
Arnold I.
Ed I. I guess we're doing alphabetically tonight. All right, excellent. We're going to enter executive session, and we will return to our open meeting following executive session. All righty. This is the Carlisle Select Board meeting for Tuesday, November 9. And before I review the agenda, I would like to just take a moment to express our sadness and condolences to Melissa Stamp's family. She is our town assessor and passed away last week. And I know from my own personal experience with her, she was really dedicated. Really dedicated to our town and doing the very best she could in her job. And I recall that, you know, we have conversations about people that were having difficulty paying their taxes or some other issue. That she really bent over backwards to work with them and try to figure out solutions. And she was also just a, you know, a real lively character, a great sense of humor. So we will miss her very much. And I wanted to express my condolences to the family. Did others like to make a comment?
I would. So, yeah, I too would like to express my condolences to the family. Melissa was just so much fun to work with, you know. When you, when you walked into the office, she was always the first one with a smile. She was always, you know, saying, hi, how are you? Just kind of, just that bubbly, energetic demeanor that she had. And I really, I really liked her a lot. I got to know her pretty well. And I'm really, really going to miss her. And I'm very sorry I'm being belligerent.
Well, I just want to second all the remarks that have been made. Back to Melissa. I always look forward to her smile and to go over, you know, catch up on family and, so she is going to be deeply missed. And deeply also, the whole town is going to deeply miss her. She had one project which she just recently completed, which was actually reported in the mosquito about not giving an abatement for particular use of a property. And she was dogged and doing the best, absolutely best she could for our town. Definitely going to miss her.
Yeah, no, just always. And being fair, you know, I mean, I know a number of people that, you know, she talked with and worked with, right, to make sure that they could stay in Carlisle. And, you know, and Board of Assessors as well, but you don't always get that. And it was, yeah, it was Carlisle first, so she'll be missed.
Yes, hi. You want to come up and speak here at the podium? Just introduce yourself.
I'm Ken Mustello. I'm the Chair of the Board of Assessors. I worked with Melissa for, it has to be about 10 years. We worked very closely together. Over the last few years, as a board chair, I was on the phone with her every week. And I can say Melissa did a fantastic job. She made our lives easy, frankly. And, yeah, she was very service-oriented, diligent. I'm going to miss her terribly. And I know the rest of the board will too. So we're really sorry to see her gone. And I feel sorry for the family, really do. She was a new grandmother, and her daughter was soon to get married. She left a lot behind.
Thank you. Well, she will certainly stay in our thoughts. But let me review what we're covering this evening in our Select Board meeting. Following our executive session, we'll, which I will mention in a minute, we will have community input. And then I see Chief Fisher is on our Zoom call, and he will make an update for the, as the head of the LEPC. We are not going to take up the request for an additional police officer tonight. We're going to move that to the 23rd. At 7:30, we have scheduled a Dangerous Dog hearing. At 8:30, the Town Governance Task Force is going to provide us with an update. Then we'll do cemetery deeds at 9, 9:05. We have appointments to several committees. Then the Town Administrators report, liaison reports, and then approval of minutes and the warrants. And then with the adjournment, we expect to be about 9:35 tonight. First, I want to say that in terms of the executive session we just held, we did approve the minutes from our executive session in August. And so those are now available for release. Under Community Input, does anyone on the Zoom call or anyone here in the audience have anything for Community Input? All right, well, seeing none, I do have two statements from different members of our community that we agreed to read, that I agreed to read aloud to have entered into the record. The first is from Stacy Lennon at 195 Stern Street. She sent an email to the Select Board November 5. And she writes, "By now you've seen the results of the pickleball open records request, which surfaced numerous emails between RecCom Chair Drew McMaro and the Steinbergs over the summer. On July 19, Drew wrote the following to the donor: 'I will begin a small public campaign to ensure support and smooth passage. I will get the mosquito to publish an enthusiastic article, the author of which is an avid pickleballer. I won't mention the Steinberg name, of course, but getting the Carlisle pickleball community excited will help squelch significant opposition before it gets started, I think. There are so many enthusiastic folks that our usual naysayers should get the hint early on. While there's no legal basis for opposition that we can see or power to stop it under the process we've outlined, we still want to prevent any of that from forming and making future hearings and votes messy affairs.'" The author, Stacy, continues, "'Can we agree that the above does not indicate a good faith intention to ascertain community support? Indeed, this evidence, this is evidence of an appointed public servant blatantly engineering a process to produce an outcome he wants. Actual public sentiment be damned. Open meeting law violations aside, this is a leadership issue. My questions for the Select Board: One, do the ends justify the RecCom chair's means? Number two, if not, is it time to reconsider Drew McMaro's leadership role? These are not trivial questions. Your stance on them will send a signal to everyone in Carlisle, public officials, employees, volunteers, residents, and voters about the kinds of clandestine behaviors the Select Board is willing to tolerate in the name of getting things done. Sincerely, Stacy Lennon, 195 Stern Street.'" And she had requested that we read this correspondence into the record this evening. In response, Drew McMaro sent us a letter dated November 7. This is from Drew McMaro, Chair of the Recreation Commission. "I'm writing to address Ms. Lennon's recent message, quoting one of my emails from a public records request. As a public appointee, it is entirely within my responsibilities to develop proposals and seek public support for them. As the excerpt indicates, we always intend to make the process public..." Sorry, excuse me. "We always intended to make the process public to ensure support before moving forward. Since concerns were raised about pace and transparency of the project, we have held public hearings on the project. Encouraged the donor to shed their anonymity and cooperated with public records requests. As Nellie Steinberg, quote, you know, the director of the foundation, indicated to the mosquito, the donor is willing to wait until a town meeting vote at the appropriate time. This discussion should be focused on what is good for the town. I believe this project represents a great opportunity to improve our recreational resources and the quality of community life in Carlisle. That I am in favor of finding a way to make this happen and to winning the public support for it are not secrets. I welcome a discussion with anyone who wants to engage with me directly about this proposal to explain why I think it is good for Carlisle. I acknowledge that the Recreation Commission has learned some lessons from this experience and recognizes the importance of open meetings and a transparent process. We do not wish to leave the impression that this or any decision was made behind closed doors. Regards, Drew McMaro, Chair, Recreation Commission." So we're not going to have any discussion about that, but they've now been entered into the record. All right, so let's move on. And Chief Fisher, with an LEPC update, please.
Thank you very much for having me. I'd like to report the LEPC met yesterday for a bi-weekly meeting. We spent a significant amount of time at the meeting, frankly, sharing stories about Melissa Stamp and all she did for our town and for planning. So I do want to talk a little bit about that, just because she was so important to all of us who worked in town, who volunteer in town, for the volunteers in town. Switching gears, we did have, we're at now 259 total cases in Carlisle, which, if you're keeping math, is a nine, nine positive increase since two weeks ago. The, importantly, tomorrow, there's a joint clinic between Concord and Carlisle for residents 5 to 12 at the Alcott School from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. That'll be staffed by both Carlisle and Concord volunteers and employees. I did also see an update that they've added a second clinic on the 17th, so the following Wednesday, with the same format, an electronic sign-up, 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The pool testing at the school has continued. And I didn't, I, yeah, 90% sure there was, there were no positive tests again during this past two-week period. The COA is reported, it's a laundry list of safe activities they're doing for seniors. One thing I'd like to highlight that was brought up by Joan at COA is they're back up to over 100 rides per month, which is basically their, their pre-COVID numbers. Our fire department is continuing to do the important testing for Carlisle residents, employees, COVID testing. They've really done a fantastic job with that. It's been an important asset for our town, important thing that we're able to offer. The library is continuing their functions, and they're actually opening activities up on their third floor again with, with safe spacing. And I guess, in the, in the name of keeping the best for last, Tim Goddard reported that CARES has confirmed that we are getting reimbursed for the cost of the structures. So really, kudos to everyone who stayed the course with this, especially our financial folks and, and for Tim himself. So that, that meant that we did, we did not, the town did not bear the expense of that. That was able to be reimbursed by the federal government for an expense in COVID. So that was super great news, and I wanted to finish off with that. Does anybody have any specific questions? Anything that I forgot, those members that were there that I didn't mention? Oh geez, you're really easy on me tonight. Thank you very much, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Chief. All right, well, we have a few minutes before the 7:30 hearing is scheduled to begin. So I'm thinking we should jump down to the appointments and resignations. And I would welcome a motion to be made on the first one that's listed in your packet. I move that the Select Board vote to accept the resignation of Conservation Commissioner Kenneth Spillit effective immediately. Any discussion? I'm tall, though, is in favor. Aye. His resignation is accepted. Do you have it up?
I move that the Select Board vote to appoint Brian Murphy at 7 School Street to serve on the Carlisle Conservation Commission with a term expiring on June 30, 2023.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, so Sylvia texted, I don't know if he mentioned it to you, but, so Ken was also on the Cranberry Bog Committee. So she asked that Brian be appointed to that as well. So can we, just because we're, we're running into quorum issues on the Cranberry Bog.
I move that the Select Board vote to appoint Brian Murphy at 7 School Street to serve on the Carlisle Conservation Commission and the Cranberry Bog Committee with a term expiring June 30, 2023.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Do they have, both of them have one year's term? Well, so he would be taking over Ken's spot.
Do we accept the resignation from Ken from the Cranberry Bog?
He was the Tom's Tom Whip, or maybe not. Yeah, but he was one of the Tom's Tom Whips, I think. It was him and Al.
All right, so we can go ahead and take a vote on that? All right, all those in favor? Aye. All right, so that is approved, right? I move that the Select Board vote to appoint Lee Storrs of 94 Brook Street and Christine Leir of, where's she headed to? No. I can't remember, she's up there. Okay. Oaknoe, I knew, I knew. We had received her letter of interest in previous packets, but we didn't actually make her appointment. To serve on the Public Safety Facility Task Force with an indefinite term.
Second.
Any discussion?
How many have we now?
We'll make it four.
When do we launch them?
Yeah.
Just give them a form?
Yeah. All those in favor? Aye. There was appointments.
I move that the Select Board. When do we take up launching them? Is that going to be today?
No.
I move that the Select Board.
Try it again. Third time's the charm.
What was it called? I was just letting Sylvia know.
I guess, just a question about it. What, what do we mean by launching them?
I just think they're ready to start.
We've already.
We have a charter.
We've had the charter, we've approved the charter.
Is that something you just found?
Yeah. They can meet ASAP now, as soon as they get.
I think there's no other steps required.
Besides swearing in and going.
I move that the Select Board vote to appoint John, Scott Jamison, 153 Nathan Lane, to serve on the Recreation Commission with a term expiring June 30, 2024.
Second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Approved, thank you. 7:20. We're so speedy. All right, um, let's see, are there parts of your? Yeah, let's, the cemetery deeds, good idea. Deed 767, I moved that the Select Board vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to Thomas and Marie Velota of 77 Nathan Lane at Green Cemetery Lot D 168 Graves 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Second.
I'm going to do all of them at once. Yeah, we've done that before. Deed 768, move that the Select Board vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to Deborah and Joseph Jansek, 172 Baldwin Road at Green Cemetery Lot D 208 Graves 1 and 2. And I move that the Select Board vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to James and Carol Davis of 232 Monroe Hill at Green Cemetery Lot D 205 Graves 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. And lastly, deed 770, move that the Select Board vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to Patsy Hayden of 153 Log Hill Road at Green Cemetery Lot D 151 Grave 3. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. And these are the correct. All right. These are two pages, because we have ones before. Yeah, I think Jen just brought them over. All right, so that's completed. Let's see, does anyone have a liaison report that is eight minutes or less?
I can, I attended the, on aging board meeting this morning, and it was a good meeting, I said, good. Good meeting, nice and short. I think most of the discussion was about pickleball. There were several avid pickleball players on COA, but COA itself has expressed publicly that, you know, they were concerned that the location would be a problem for a future community center. And on the good side, along the lines of Drew's letter in response to Stacy, I think the RecCom had sent them a list of things, kind of saying, you know, let's talk. Let's talk. So it seems that there will be some informal meeting between those boards about, you know, the overall youth plan. There is then the master planning report coming out in a couple of weeks. So I think, a view, I guess, personal view at this point, is that a little kerfuffle about pickleball actually has had a good outlook to kind of re-energize this debate about that, you know, a broader community center type thing, and how this would fit. And I realize it's not the Steinberg family's intention to fund that or fund a part of that, but it creates this dialogue. So I think that that was positive and, and that was most of it. And the other stuff, I guess, have they, it reminds me of one thing, Barney, that it did come to us to request the name change, and we still have not voted that?
Yeah, that was the new report, I think, last time, Tim.
Last time.
Do we need to do that? Is that our?
We need to vote it to put it on the town meeting.
You need to put it on the town meeting warrant for the spring.
We should do that, yeah. They didn't ask me that, I remember.
Yeah, that makes sense. Start building our list, let's put it on the.
Yeah, the warrant.
In the warrant book. All right, thank you, David. Anybody else have a liaison report? Okay.
There were minutes.
All right, um, yeah, let's go ahead and look at the, we have one, I think we have two sets of minutes. Is that right? Or is it just one? One, all right, well, let's take a look at that set of minutes.
I know that we approve.
Thank you.
Regular meeting minutes of October 26, 2021 are presented.
Thank you. Luke seconded it. Is there any discussion?
Good job.
All right, well, then let's take a vote on accepting those minutes as moved. All those in favor? Aye. All right, the minutes have been approved. Mine, I do want to pass them on. I'll pass them on.
And acknowledge that the warrants were.
And then the warrants that are in there are ones that I signed. And we don't do anything except just kind of point out that I signed those on behalf of the Select Board. Well, we've got five more minutes. We are so efficient this evening. Tim, do you want to offer, maybe take a look at some of the? I thought your town hall budget, you could say that for after, but some of the other items in your report.
Sure, sure. There's, there's an amended engagement letter with Cluston Larson Allen, our independent auditors. We're, we'll be increasing the amount for the audit to $38,750. There's about a $5,500 add to that because, because we received $400,000 in CARES money, we went over the limit for the single audit. The federal government audits every agency that receives more than $100,000 in federal aid, which now is us. So that's additional work for the auditors, and they asked if they were agreeing with the amendment for that. We'll probably be in that single audit category for a number of years going forward with our president's report. So if the board would vote to amend the engagement with the auditors, that would be great.
I move the board approve the amended engagement letter with CLA for the fiscal '21 audit year in the amount of $38,750.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Well, we talked about the close of our CARES program. Gary Davis was going to be on the Zoom call at 9 for this item. Do we want to hear from Gary or you?
I will be handling it. I can text him that he's not needed if he wants to buy.
Probably appreciate it.
The back call for the.
Oh, the back call. He wants to talk about the back.
Yeah.
Do we need him on the calls, Nathan?
I can give an update from what I know, and maybe Luke can.
You know, supplement as needed.
Okay, you've got two minutes.
I've got two minutes. Okay, so they want to buy another tractor for, that will, for the cemetery, obviously, to use other things, but the primary reason for it is for the cemetery. Their current tractor is really too big for the size of the cemetery as it is right now. So it's very, very hard for them to kind of get in around it. And they were going to ask for long-term tax money, but they decided that they can fund it from the cemetery fund. So right now, they have a tractor on a verbal hold that was leased to us. And so we will get it for $20,000 less than we would if we were to say, no, let's, you know, do something different. So we're saving $20,000 by doing it this way.
Want to add anything, Luke?
No, that was good.
Okay, great. So do we need to make a motion then to approve that? Or no, this is just by way of information, because it's already in his budget, right? Already in the cemetery.
Yeah, I move that we approve $100,000 of the, whatever the amount is. What is, yeah, I think.
I approve, we, I.
Yes, it's $100,000. I move, I move that we approve Gary's purchase of the tractor from the cemetery fund. Second.
Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Carrie's unanimously, excellent.
We do fulfill.
Well done, well done. All right. We have literally less than about a minute. And so what I think I'm going to do.
One more item on this thing.
Ah, do you want to mention the holiday party briefly?
Well, sure, I can.
And we can all get that on our calendars.
The board sponsored the holiday party. The employees will be in this room on Thursday, December 9. And we'll send out information on invitations so that everyone can be here, who wants to be here.
What time is it?
Probably.
It's lunch.
You know the time itself?
Not a potluck.
Yeah.
It's a Chinese, we'll provide a Chinese meal, correct?
I'll say, yes.
Buffet.
Yeah, it'll be very popular. Additionally, we heard from that Earl with the turns, and the tree lighting was going to be December 7, Jen, Tuesday, December 7. So, like, it will be meeting that night. You'll see later in the report that we changed the December schedule to meet on the 7th and the 21st instead of the 14th and the 26th. But usually, there's enough. just a holiday. That's right.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Excellent, thanks, Tim, and we'll come back, um, and review the town hall budget.
Sure, yeah.
When we get there. Okay, great.
Yeah, will you, will Luke, um, Gary Davis know that, or Jen, do you want to do that? Let him know?
I'll, I'll, I'll push it away now, let him know that he's.
Okay, great, thank you very much. All right, so, well, we've now come to the point in the meeting when we're going to open the dangerous dog hearing. Um, I'd like to, uh, read, first of all, um, just an explanation about the meeting. Um, this is a hearing of the select board held pursuant to general laws, chapter one forty, section one fifty-seven, and section fourteen point six point seven of the town's general bylaws, for the purposes of determining whether the dog named Dexter of eighty-one Greystone Lane, Carlisle Mass, oh one seven four one, is a dangerous dog or a nuisance dog, and in either case, to determine the appropriate remedial, remedial action to be taken. Now, um, this hearing is, uh, gonna be conducted, uh, following open meeting laws, um, which means that you need to be recognized by the chair to speak, and when you are recognized, um, if you're on the, on a Zoom call, you can state your name and, um, your address, or if you're here in the, in person, you should come up to the podium and state your name and address. And, um, for everyone that's going to offer testimony, um, I'm going to be, um, asking you to be sworn in, and so just prepare yourself for that. I'll, I'll read the, um, the text, uh, when, when it's your time to come forward. Um, we also have on our Zoom call Jenny Merrill, who is town council for us for dog hearings. Thank you, Jenny, for being here. And, um, is, is Justin Neal on the?
Neal is on the call, yeah.
Okay, excellent. Uh, thank you, uh, Justin Neal, Mr. Neal, for being with us tonight. I'm, uh, and then I also see that, uh, Gene Delano is our, um, animal control officer, and he is here in the audience. So I'm gonna start with, uh, excuse me, the complainant is, um, Justin Neal, but because the animal control officer, um, was involved in the quarantine, issuing of the quarantine notices, I'd like to have him come up first and just, uh, review that with us. And, um, uh, before you begin, Gene, um, I'd like you to say the following, aye, and then your name.
Aye, Gene Delano.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
That the testimony I'm about to give.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Gene.
Good evening, board. Um, so we're here as a result of a complaint by Justin Neal, um, um, of eighty Captain Wilson Lane in Carlisle. Animal Control, um, has been involved with a neighbor's, um, with, uh, behavior because of a neighbor's dog since July of twenty twenty, twenty twenty. First quarantine issued for the dog known as Dexter, uh, owned by Joseph Topol of eighty-one Greystone Lane, was issued, um, on the sixth of July, twenty twenty. Um, at the time, a notification of an animal bite was received from Emerson Emergency Department, where, where Mr. Neal was treated for, um, left hand and wrist injuries caused by Dexter. Quarantine lasted for ten days until the fourteenth of, um, July, twenty twenty. At the time, I know, um, Mr. Neal was made aware of the process for, um, bringing a complaint to the board, um, and no complaint was brought forward, to my knowledge, in twenty twenty. In August of twenty twenty-one, a, uh, report of, a complaint of a bite, um, was made to, and, and relayed to me through the Carlisle Police Dispatch. As the animal control officer on duty at the time, I responded to, um, quarantine Dexter a second time. I went to the residence at eighty-one Greystone Lane in Carlisle, spoke with Mr. Topol. Um, Mr. Topol showed me, um, a number of things that he had, he had done to try to alleviate or, uh, to, uh, correct the previous problem, including install, installing a fence around his backyard. The dog had breached, um, a, a fence and run into the, run into the street, uh, at which point, an encounter with, um, Mr. Neal and his dogs resulted in one of his dogs being attacked and, um, I believe receiving, uh, treatment for wounds. Quarantine number two for Dexter expired on the twenty-sixth of August of twenty twenty-one. This week, we received from the complainant, um, photographic evidence, which is probably in your packet, um, which details puncture wounds, I, I, I'm not a doctor, but wounds to, um, uh, Mr. Neal's arm, and also wounds to his animal. Um, Mr. Topol's animal Dexter is under a temporary restraining order until the outcome of this hearing. Um, that kind of covers my input, my, my portion of the input here. Are there any questions? Thank you.
What is a temporary restraining order mean?
A temporary restraining, restraining order, I can, um, it may be in your packet, but, um, it details first the reason for the restraining order, um, which would be incidents involving, um, you know, a dog's misbehavior. Um, and it specifies that the animal for the next thirty days, or until such time as the board has concluded its hearings on the matter, um, the animal has been humanely restrained, you know, provided that it's not chained to a tree, or tethered, or otherwise tied to an inanimate object, a tree, post, or building, um, in failure to follow this, um, get you in trouble, basically. Um, so that restraining order was issued on the fourteenth of September and remains in, in effect.
Thank you.
Hi, Luke.
Hi, how are you?
I just inspected your barn.
I know, yeah, yeah, I know, in a past, actually.
Yeah.
Um, so, no, just a couple of quick questions. So, uh, the initial thing said, the initial email said that there was an electric fence, right? And then, but you said you just went to inspect a full fence?
Um, there may indeed, I, I don't recall whether there is an electric fence at the property. I, I didn't see any flags or anything, but those don't have to be in existence. Um, the, uh, homeowner had installed a new chain link fence of, I would say, regulation height after the initial, uh, incident in twenty twenty.
Right.
Um, he actually showed me an area of the fence, um, where he believes the animal escaped. We discussed, um, ways of remediating, you know, putting this portion a little bit higher if necessary, or it happens to be on a big chunk of granite, so, you know, it'll be a little more difficult, but he seemed very, um, open to whatever steps were necessary. Um, so, he's very responsive.
Okay, yeah, no, and that was kind of my, because the, the initial email that we saw, you know, said that he was gonna fence, right?
Yeah.
And, and so that has been done.
Yeah.
But he did get looped, but maybe there's a remedy for that as well, so.
And actually, I will say that, um, since the complainant in this case is Justin Neal, he, he can provide a more, um, a more full description of what happened.
Yeah, that was, yes, okay.
So, we'll go on to that next, and, but thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Justin Neal, thank you for being here. Um, uh, I'd like to, um, uh, ask you please to raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye?
Aye, Justin Neal.
Do solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give.
Do solemnly swear that the testimony that I'm about to give.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Neal, and would you, um, tell us what your street address is, please?
Uh, I live at eighty Captain Wilson Lane in Carlisle.
Okay, great, thank you, yes. Would you just walk us through, I know you wrote it out in your letter to me, but if you would walk us through what happened in these incidents?
Yeah, I actually have, I actually have written it out as well, so, but, good evening, everyone. Um, I wanted to thank the members of the select board for taking the time to hear this complaint, and I hope not to take too much of your time tonight. Um, it's a very difficult thing to take the action that we're pursuing today against our neighbors and friends, and we do this knowing that the relationship that we have with them will probably never be the same. However, this is not just a matter of two dog attacks, um, but the potential for a far more significant attack in the future. We live in Greystone Crossing, a housing development off Cross Street, and made up of Trillium Way, Greystone Lane, and Captain Wilson Lane. This is a neighborhood with numerous small dogs and many children of middle school age and below. It's with these people in mind, and the numerous people who walk with and without their dogs in our neighborhood, as well as our own peace of mind, that we take this path today. We've owned in Greystone Crossing since twenty thirteen, and we've walked our dogs on the roads and paths within the association since that time, often passing eighty-one Greystone multiple times during the day. On two occasions, July fourth, twenty twenty, and August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, my dogs and I were viciously attacked by the dog Dexter, um, from eighty-one Greystone Lane owned by the Topols. Both incidents were reported to the Carlisle Police Department. On July fourth, twenty twenty, we were out walking as normal, something that we used to do daily, often passing eighty-one on four or five occasions as we walked the loop in the neighborhood. On this particular day, we'd passed eighty-one Greystone once, and had just passed the property for a second time, walking up Greystone Lane towards number seventy-four, when the animal ran us down from behind and viciously attacked my dogs and I. We were walking, we were not running, we were approximately located at the red X on the picture provided in the original email, perhaps a hundred yards past the driveway of number eighty-one. Um, I'd noticed the dog at the top of the driveway on the first time past, and that, and it was still sitting there as we walked past a second time. It was sitting next to the Topol's other dog Willis. It was a cute scene, which is why I remember it so well. I didn't see the animal coming until it was only a few feet behind us. I turned, and like a missile, the animal was by me and trying to get the head of my chocolate lab into its mouth. Fortunately, he couldn't get a good grip, and he released to have another go, and that's when I was bitten. After several, well, after what seemed like several minutes of battling with the animal, I was able to pull it off my dogs and drag it back to the Topol's house. I was able to fight it off the dog and drag it back to its home where Joe helped me patch up, uh, helped patch me up before I was called my wife, and she took me to the ER. It's important to understand that this is a very strong, powerful animal. I'm six foot four and two hundred and fifty pounds. I'm a fairly strong guy, and I can look after myself. And although I was eventually able to get control of the animal at the cost of a, you know, a visit to the doctor, this was a, a battle that was not easy for me to win. And, you know, I sent pictures, uh, of the wounds that I received to, um, to the board. Both of my dogs were also bitten and required veterinary attention that day. Um, later in the afternoon on July fourth, Joe called around to see how we were doing. He told us that he believed that the dog needed to be in a home where there were no other animals around it, and that it was not in the neighborhood. And at that time, he committed to have the animal rehomed. Um, this would have been a, a satisfactory outcome for us. Um, however, several days later, he informed us that we would not be honoring that commitment, um, and that they'd decided to keep the animal. They promised it would never be outside unleashed unless it was in their yard, which would be fenced as soon as possible, and they also committed never to walk the animal past our house. We're not overly happily, happy with that, but we understand their position, and so we decided not to take the process any further, believing that the animal would be safely contained. And shortly thereafter, Joe installed a, um, wire fence around the backyard of his property. On at least one occasion that I'm aware of, in August twenty twenty-one, the animal was walked past our property. Fortunately, our dogs were in the house at the time, and so there was no altercation. However, on Friday, August the thirteenth of twenty twenty-one, I was driving up Cross Street, and I saw the animal walking alone down the road. I called Joe to let him know that the dog was out. Um, he was already aware, and he was out looking for, for it, and he told me later that one of the kids had left the gate open, and the dog had got out that way. With hindsight, we now know that, uh, he was mistaken about that, and that it had probably got out through the, um, through the hole, the, the hole that it had dug under the fence. On August sixteenth, my dogs and I were walking in the neighborhood. Um, this time, we were a lot further up the road. We were outside number one oh six, Greystone Lane, um, on their top driveway. Um, again, it's highlighted on one of the pictures that I sent to the board. Um, I didn't see the dog coming, but I turned and saw it standing next to one of my dogs, sniffing it. Um, suddenly and without cause, it viciously attacked my dog, which is an eleven-year-old black Labrador. Um, so he, he's not the, he's not the most, um, vivacious of animals. Um, I was able to pull, pull the dog off. It's a Staffordshire bull terrier mix, so, again, it's, it's a big, powerful dog. And then with, with the assistance of one of the Topol's children who came out to help, um, the animal was returned to its house. Um, the force of the attack and the subsequent melee caused my watch to be ripped from my wrist, and the steel strap to be broken, and some of the steel pieces to be bent. And I'm using that as just a demonstration of the force with which the attack was, was, um, you know, created and, and nothing, and for no other reason. Um, the lab that took the brunt of the attack required treatment from the vet for bites, and that's shown in other pictures that I submitted to the board that Gene, um, noted earlier, and those photographs were taken by the vet. My dogs defended themselves, and I understand that, um, the attacking animal was also treated for bites. But both of these attacks were completely unprovoked. They took place away from the Topol's property, and they both resulted in injuries. I'm very concerned about what would have happened should my wife have been walking past rather than me, or one of the mothers with small children had been there. I don't believe that they could have fought off this animal, and the consequences could have been significantly more dire than they were on either of the two occasions when I was attacked. We're now no longer able to walk up Greystone Lane for fear of being attacked by the animal again. And, um, and so that's really the, 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 the brunt of the, of, of the complaint. But as I, as I close, um, I would like to remind the board of the definition of what a dangerous dog is according to the Commonwealth, uh, under general laws. And the definition is that a dog, either, one, without justification, attacks a personal domestic animal, causing physical injury or death, or two, behaves in a manner that is a reasonable person would believe possesses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person to be, or to a domestic or owned animal. And I don't believe that there can be any doubt that this animal constitutes a danger under section one of that definition, and I refer you again to the photographs that I submitted. And I refer you again to the photographs that I submitted. I know that under one, section one fifty-seven A, one through four, the Commonwealth lists several circumstances under which the animal's behavior can be deemed not grossly disproportionate. And I don't want to read the entire passages of the law. But I would just state that none of those circumstances apply in this case. The animal attacked us. It wasn't protecting anything or anyone from attack. We were not in the process of committing a crime upon the person or property of the owner or the keeper of the dog. There was no taunting, battering, assaulting, injury, or otherwise provoking of the dog. It attacked us from behind and with no warning. We were not on their property at any time and therefore cannot have breached any enclosures, premises, or items listed under that section of the general law. I know the options of the board are limited, and I'm in no way asking for the dog to be removed or euthanized. I want to make sure that the animal is contained in such a way that Greystone Crossing remains a safe place for our neighbors and other members of our community to walk in the neighborhood. And the fact that it's escaped from its fenced yard on two occasions within a week, and those are just the ones we know about, proves to me it cannot be safely contained by its current fenced yard, and I implore the board to do something to ensure that this cannot and does not happen in the future. And with that, I'd like to thank the board for their time.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. I think we should go ahead and hear other testimony, and then we can come back as a board if we have any specific questions. And just the way this hearing goes, Mr. Neal is because we just went through this on another dog, so we're actually fairly familiar with it at this point, and we do all have the statute in front of us regarding the very things that you mentioned. Is that we'll take whatever testimony people want to offer, and then we will close that part of the hearing, and then we as a board will deliberate here openly and first determine whether, what, what, whether the dog is considered a nuisance or a dangerous dog, and then based on that, what remedies. So let me ask if anyone else is here that would like to offer testimony in this case. Jim, do you know if, is someone representing the Topols?
Neither Mr. Topol nor his attorney are on the call. And they know of the hearing because attorney contacted us last week.
Okay.
They're aware of it, but they're not on the call.
All right. Is anyone else either here in the room or on the Zoom call that wants to offer any testimony at this time? Well, then let us open it up. Do we have any questions that we want to ask of Mr. Neal or anything further of Mr. Delano before we close the, this portion of the hearing and then go on to our deliberations?
I have one question. Do you know how old the dog is?
Three years old.
Three years old, okay.
Another question is, is he neutered?
The breed of Dexter?
That should not influence our deliberation.
How big is Dexter? How big is the dog? Mr. Neal?
How many pounds?
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to hear the question.
Oh, what would you guess the dog's weight is? How big a dog is it?
I'm a little uncomfortable guessing, but it's bigger than my Labrador. So I would say it's above eighty-five pounds.
Yeah. And, Mr. Neal, I have just one quick question for you. So you said that the Topols had put up a wire fence, and is that the same as the sort of chain link fence you were describing, Mr. Delano? So you're describing the same, same fence?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And the fence has a gate. But Gene, if I understand correctly, you were saying there is a piece of granite right next to the fence, and so you think the dog may have been able to get on that and go over the fence?
Walk the fence line.
Yeah.
In the sense, the, the, obviously there, so it's up over, for all of the natural that are popping there.
Right.
Areas that are high. The one with it. You don't want to assume that that's where the dog, you think that's where the
Was it, was able to actually, when you say breach it, go over it? Yeah. And then, Mr. Neal, you had also mentioned that you, I think, am I right in that Mr. Topol had, you had, Mr. Topol mentioned that he thought the dog had dug his way under the fence?
I can't comment to how it, how it, how it escaped. My understanding was that it had dug underneath, but it could have gone over the top.
Yep. Okay. All right. Anyone else have any sort of particular questions like that before we go into the, our own deliberations?
I have one more. Mr. Neal, I just, so in prior, the dog is, how old is it? So in the previous two and a half years, your dogs are older, so you've had those, your two dogs and that dog have probably existed without incident until this summer?
Until, until July, until July fourth, twenty twenty.
Last year, sorry. But in the two years precedent, Dexter was there, right?
Dexter was adopted when he was fully grown, as far as I'm aware.
So was that pretty recently relative to the July of twenty?
I, I can't comment.
Well, what I mean is, were you walking your dogs for?
Yes, we, we, we were aware of that dog being in, on that property and had seen the dog many times prior to the first attack.
Without incident?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? So there is no more testimony that people want to offer. Are you hearing something, Tim?
No, I just wanted to get some confirmation.
Oh, excuse me, yes. Town Council Jenny Merrill, do you have anything you want to offer at this point?
I don't think so. I think that all of the exhibits that I know of have already been noted in the testimony. So I don't think there's anything else you need to record at this point.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to close the public hearing, and then at this point, we as a board need to determine first of all whether this is a dangerous dog or a nuisance dog, and then we will need to render a decision about what remedies based on that. So do we need to, does anyone need to remember, to be reminded of the dangerous dog definition? We have it in our packet. And we've had this before. So I guess I'll take comments then from anyone on the board about your
Vote to close the hearing.
Oh, I need to vote that? Okay, first.
I think we should vote that.
Okay, thanks. So may I have a motion to close the public hearing, hearing portion of this dog? All those in favor? All right, all right. Any opposed? All right, thank you. See, that portion of the hearing is closed. So let's take, let's discuss the definition of a dangerous dog. So just to quickly review, without justification attacks a person or domestic animal causing physical injury or death. Do we think that that occurred in this situation?
Gee, what do you think?
Yeah, no, I think it was clear that this is a dangerous dog and not just a nuisance dog.
And then the other condition is behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic or owned animal. Does anyone feel that we should not determine that this is a dangerous dog?
I have one question, I guess. These bites occurred in one of the incidents. Did the other one also result in injury?
No, according to Mr. Neal's testimony, the dog received injuries in the second incident, and he was three years, had a, had a bad
So both both incidents resulted in injury with some, yeah. And the statute doesn't distinguish whether a dog bites dog or a dog bites man.
Attacks a person or domestic animal. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Well, then I think we determine this dog Dexter to be a dangerous dog under Mass General Laws, chapter forty, section one thirty-six A. Any more discussion? All those in favor, for all?
All right.
Any opposed? All right. So Dexter's been determined to be a dangerous dog. Then if we continue down in our packets, we will see number five are the remedies. And so let's just remind ourselves, the first one is that the dog needs to be humanely restrained. And similar to, with the, you know, quarantine, with the temporary restraining order, it has to be in a humane way. Second is that the dog be confined, and these are not mutually exclusive. Second is the dog be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog. And that means securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run area upon the premises of the owner or keeper. And that such pen or dog run shall have a secure roof, and if the enclosure has no floor secured to the sides, the sides shall be embedded into the ground for not less than two feet. And the dog must have a house and proper shelter. Third remedy is that when the dog is removed from the premises, the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or some other tethering device, a leash, for example, having a minimum tensile strength of three hundred pounds and not exceeding three feet in length. And the fourth remedy is that the owner or keeper of the dog provide to the licensing authority or animal control officer information about the dog that allow it to be identified throughout its lifetime, including but not limited to photographs, videos, vet exams, tattooing, or microchip implantations, or any other such forms of identification.
I'll go ahead and tip it off. I think in this case, one, two, three, and four are all things I would like to see being done, especially in light of the fact that the dog has been able to get out of the yard. I think this needs to be, you need to be confined in an area that has a roof and a floor in it. And I don't think that any of the other remedies are too, so extreme that they shouldn't be that's for.
Yeah, my, my, my only question really is insurance. We didn't, maybe we did our error, but we didn't apply that last time.
You don't have insurance on this one? I have a question for you, Jenny. So that's not listed here.
Well, you have to go to the other document. That was another question. The complete remedy is farther down the practice. I don't know why that
Beyond number five?
I don't know why that hasn't excerpted the remedy.
Because of what the previous dog hearing had the additional Hello, Justin Neal's
Yeah, below all of it.
Below all of that?
Something got cut off of that stuff about the full remedy.
Okay.
The full remedies are
Okay, well, I guess I, I will still stand by what I said.
Okay, here are the remedies. I see.
Okay, and then the sixth.
Ah, number four here is that the owner or keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance in amount not less than a hundred thousand, ensuring the owner or keeper against any claim, loss, damage, or injury to persons. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but that's number four.
Information. And then number six is new also.
Six is what we've already read about the restraint. Oh, no, sorry. Six is evidence from the veterinarian that unless an owner or keeper of the dog provides evidence that a veterinarian is of the opinion that the dog is unfit for alterations because of medical conditions, the owner or the keeper of the dog shall cause the dog to be altered. So that would, since we don't know that for sure, that could be something we could include as a remedy.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, of course, number seven is that the dog be humanely euthanized.
So I will go back and say I would propose that we use remedy one, that he's restrained humanely, two, that he is to be confined to the premises, and that if he's outside, he needs to be in a pen. Three, that when he's removed from the premises, he has to be muzzled and kept on a short and very strong leash. Four, no. Five, that the dog owner provides us with information for how it can be identified. And that six, because we do not know whether he's been altered or not, that we kept evidence from a veterinarian regarding his opinion of the dog being fit or unfit for alteration, considering a medical issue. Or we ask for evidence that it has been Or we ask for evidence that he's been altered. Maybe it's not been
Well, yeah, right. All right. Any comments on the proposal on the floor?
I, I have one quite, well, one comment about number two, the confining to the premises.
Yeah.
The dog is three years old. And you know, that's pretty hard on the dog, you know, and makes it very, very hard for them to train the dog in a way to possibly prevent this from happening again, because what this means is they cannot take the dog off the property ever. As we discussed last time, which is why we did not put it in the last one. Right? No, not unless it's on a muzzle. It cannot leave the property.
No, that's not what number two says.
I'm sorry, Jenny, that's what you stated last time?
No, it's my, you did, no, I'm not, yeah, we did discuss this last time, and the fact that number two and number three seem to be in conflict with each other, is it two and three?
Yeah.
I believe that last time you said that for number two, it means that the dog cannot be taken off the property, and if they, it has to see the vet or something, it has, the vet has to go to the dog.
This, this reading of number two supports that.
And so I think that's why we chose not to do it last time. And I just, I think that that would make it very, very hard for them to effect a change in the dog. You know, Joseph Topol has put up a fence. I think he just needs to make sure, I don't know, maybe manhole the fence. Maybe, maybe there's two, two gates on that fence so that, you know, if, you know, if one is left open, you know, there's another one so the dog can't sneak by them, and we're not here to construct it.
Right.
But I just think that it's gonna, I think that number two is very, I totally understand the fear of walking around there. I would be very fearful walking around there, walking my dog. And they need to make sure that the dog cannot get out. But I think the idea of the dog can never leave the premise for any reason is on a three-year-old dog is going to make it very hard for that dog for it to end up with a happy, you know, happy solution for the dog.
Well, maybe it's up to the honor to, to be coming up with a happy solution for the animal.
That's the question if, maybe for Gene, if you know, if we, if we, I, I agree with Nathan, and if we were to set aside two and focus on one and three, so three is pretty simple, but one, like the situation you encountered where there was a rock and maybe it could be a launching pad, I presume to comply with one, it has to be not easy to breach, right? So it would be incumbent on the Topols to build up that fence and move it around the rock or do other things to make sure that the remedy is effective, right? Maybe it doesn't Maybe it doesn't stay at that level, right? That seems to be implied, right?
So Jenny, can we, uh, are we only allowed to pick one of these? The, the language is listed here. Those are the only things that we can include in our remedies. We can't, uh, could we add, um, a sort of a rider or whatever that the existing, uh, fence, um, be, be, um, what's the right? Reinforced, um, to, um, make it impossible for the dog to go over the fence? And if necessary to, you know, put in a second gate if the gate gets left open. I, you know, the language we'd have to figure out. But is it possible for us to add something more specific like that to the, to basically what's listed? I guess there really isn't anything about just a fence, is there?
Right. So I don't know that you can, you could add something to the order itself. But I think, you know, there's a, you, you're going to have a determination. And I think as part of your determination, you can make clear that, um, that the fence situation that they have now, you know, you do not consider to, to meet the require, a requirement that they, the dog be humanely restrained. Um, I mean, if the dog is, if, if you issue an order saying that the dog must be humanely restrained and went off the premises in a muzzle, you know, and the dog gets out, then clearly they weren't humanely restrained, um, you know, in compliance with the order. And I think that we could put something in the order that states that. As a deter, you know, as part of your determinations.
Yeah, because I, I think we, you know, we start getting ourselves in the trouble if we start making suggestions. And it's on them, right? And ultimately, if they don't comply, then, then they're back and then the remedies are more extreme.
Exactly. I think it is fair to say, but we don't feel like what you have now clearly is not adequate.
Yeah.
Yep. They need to make sure there is no way for that dog to get out.
So the, um, but you bring up another point, which does bother me about the statutes. And I, there's probably no remedy, but I am personally a big fan of dog training for my dogs. Uh, and it's great to, but we, I don't know, we can recommend, but, I mean, it's too bad that dog, a program of dog training is not one of the remedies. Young dogs can be trained.
Right.
I don't know what to do with that. Is that, can we make a suggestion or not? Not in the statute, but can one make a recommendation that we strongly urge the owner to enroll the dog in a program of training program?
Um, you, you could put, you could put something in your, in the order. If it's not, as long as you're not ordering them to do that, I think that you're.
Can order.
That in there somewhere. But I agree with you, you know, that the statute seems to lay out some options that are, uh, you know, not adequate.
Okay, so then in our wording, we want to say, um, that we don't consider that the condition that, under which they've been keeping the dog, you know, up until now, has been the humane, yeah, fits our definition of mainly restrained. Well, I think what I.
Or at least not restrained.
Right. Because he's not restrained. Right. And that, um, you know. But we, it sounds, from what I'm hearing from you Jenny, we, we, um, determine the, the specific remedies that we want to apply in this case. And then we can add, uh, the, the, uh, determinations that we find the current, uh, way that the dog is being restrained is inadequate.
Right. Yeah, I think it's.
And then second, right, and then second are, um, we strongly recommend that the owner of the dog, you know, consider dog training or something like that. Is that reasonable? Okay. But Jenny will be the one who, um, will be writing this up for us. Right, so it's number one.
Number one.
And it's number three. Yeah. And number four.
Or number five.
Oh, wait, wait, four is the insurance. We didn't, I didn't. Sorry. I, I don't, I don't see the use of that frankly. But number five. Well, let's go back and discuss the insurance for a minute because some folks may feel differently.
Well, Luke, you know, my only comment with the insurance is that it, it almost kind of puts the ball on somebody else's skin, right? And if, if, you know, we determine it to be a dangerous dog and they can no longer insure their property because of the dog, uh, it kind of solves the problem, right? But.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, I, I, I mean, ultimately, if there's going to be a loss, if there's going to be a loss, if somebody's going to laugh, but, but, yeah, I, I mean, I just, I, I don't see why we wouldn't necessarily require it. Um, but, I, I mean, I guess I can say it both ways, but, I don't know.
I thought you were making an argument that we wouldn't include it. You were making an argument that we would.
We would.
Yeah, we would, yeah. Yeah, we would, yeah.
Include the insurance.
Yeah, why wouldn't we?
Well, the only reason, the only reason not to, to me, is precedent that we didn't do it last time. Well, maybe that was our error, I admit it.
Yeah, we, sorry, like.
Had I been here last.
No, but that, but I, I, I just, like, I don't see, I don't see why we wouldn't. You know, I mean, we, we want to, you know, be strong about this, right? And, and ultimately, you know, they've tried to comply, right? Which is.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think appreciated and acknowledged, right? But it wasn't enough, and.
But you're imposing, I mean, you've got, let me advocate the other side just as a pro forma, as a dog piece. So the owners, if the owners want to keep, and this would be any dog in this dog hearing, they want to keep their pet, which is generally what owners want to do. They have to go to considerable expense to construct the pen. They've got to do a bunch of things.
Well, we're not providing the fence.
I mean, by the fencing, you know, they got to do things. They got to do things. And that's reasonable to happen, do things. The, the minute they go for, again, this is the limit of the statute. The minute they go for that kind of insurance with this kind of incident, their core homeowners insurance. So you're imposing a significant monetary penalty on top of all the other stuff that actually doesn't do anything to drive dog behavior. It's just a penalty, basically. And, I mean, if they get injured and they don't have insurance, they're going to fork over money. So I don't understand the value of this one, other than a, than a monetary penalty on the people. And I, I guess my personal feeling is, maybe the last time I might have thought about it more, I might have thought that was a better idea. But I don't see the need. I, I would rather they took that money and they spent it on some dog training. They're going to spend thousands of dollars more on their homeowners insurance every single year from that one, as long as they have that.
But insurance would. But maybe it forces them to think twice before they.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, what are we, what are we trying to do? I mean, we're trying to make sure that it doesn't happen again.
Right.
It has nothing to do with not happening.
Well, I, I disagree with something.
So anyway, that's, that might be just.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and, and ultimately, their monetary cost, right? Their, their cost isn't really our concern.
I know, but if they, if they, if they don't get the insurance, look, they live on Captain whatever lane, we know the houses that they, like. They, if they don't get insurance, they're going to fork over even more. So why is prescribing insurance, I don't, I don't see it.
I would hear from others on that point.
Could I win? Oh, okay. Actually, it's better people didn't hear that tirade.
We have eleven minutes if we, if we want to try to, um, by eight-thirty. You know, but not to brush us, but. Nathan, did you want to comment on the insurance question?
Um, well, I mean, I, I, I honestly, I. They don't want to hear me either. I, I do see both parts. I do, I, I do also, um, think that there's a precedent thing. And while Luke wasn't here last time, I think that there is a precedent thing that I worry about. I don't understand, and maybe Jenny can tell us, like, what, what is the intent of having this in here as a remedy? Is it in case there's a dog owner who doesn't have the resources to pay for, to pay for somebody who may get injured by their dog, or?
Um, you know, I, I think it's just in here as a, as a way for, uh, yeah, folks who have, who have been bit by the dog to be able to get compensated for it if they're not, if they, if they're unsuccessful getting compensated through the owner themselves.
Okay, or the homeowner, owner's home insurance, right?
Or through the homeowner, yes, yes.
So I, I, I get where this could help if somebody was bit and maybe it makes it easier to get the funds to, you know, to recoup, you know, to recoup the injury costs or, or suit. I don't see how this helps change the behavior of the dog. I guess I need to make, you know, so I don't know. I, I, I worry about the precedent. I don't understand what it does for, you know, for the dog. But I certainly understand that it makes it easier for somebody to recover the money.
I'd like to recognize Tim, if I might, our town administrator.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. The Topols aren't here with their attorney. They do have a letter, uh, from the town stating that the hearing was at eight-thirty. I'm not aware of how that, evidently that's a typographical letter. But, uh.
Okay.
I, I guess I'd ask town council where the hearing is closed. What, what is our remedy at this point? That the notice was defective in some respect to the, uh, dog owners. There's a notice.
You can reopen it.
Say it again Jenny?
I think you can reopen the hearing. You haven't made a decision.
Okay, excuse me, hang on one second. I'm the chair of the board and, um, uh, our rules are that you need to be recognized by the chair if you want to speak. But we are considering reopening the hearing, so just hold on, okay? And we'll, we'll get to that shortly, I think. So, um, are we comfortable reopening the hearing?
Of course.
Yes, okay. So, um, I think I need a formal motion to do that. Let me reopen the hearing. Is there a second? All right, um, any discussions? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Great, thank you. So, um, I would like to recognize the, um, Topol family. And, um, I understand you have legal counsel here with you. So who would like to offer testimony? And the way we'd like to do this is to have you come up to the podium so you can be heard, um, uh, by those that are joining us remotely and state your name. And, uh, in your case, sir, uh, if you, you know, tell us your law firm and that you're representing the Topols. Thanks.
Thank you. Right, good evening. Uh, we're starting early. Uh, my name is Jeremy Cohen. My law firm is Boston Dog Lawyers, and I represent the Topols. So, um, now.
Excuse me, Jeremy, can you say that again, Jeremy? What's your last name?
O H E N. And I've already notified the town that I'm involved.
Okay, great.
My law firm is Boston Dog Lawyers.
Thank you.
So I have a notice for eight-thirty. I also got it direct from the town that the notice was eight-thirty. My client said a notice for eight-thirty. Have you already taken testimony in this matter?
We have.
And why is that?
Well, because, um, we, we had the notice.
The hearing was on the agenda for seven-thirty.
Yeah, we, we had posted it on our, um.
I do acknowledge the letter that Mr. Topol has since eight-thirty, but.
Ah, I see, so that was an error. Yeah, we, you know, by open meeting law, we post our agendas, um, within forty-eight business hours before the meeting and it was posted to begin at seven-thirty. So, um, I did know, uh, because Mr. Goddard had told me that, um, there was legal representation that would join us. So I guess there's been a tremendous misunderstanding about the start time of the hearing.
So I just have a few questions.
Yeah.
Well, there's no confusion on, on my part, right? The start of the hearing, because I got the letter direct from town, guy named Stoddard.
You think Goddard, maybe? That's Mr. Tim Goddard here, our town administrator.
So.
Yes.
We, we've emailed. Then, so my question is, of the, did anybody provide testimony from?
Yes, we heard from, uh, our animal control officer, Mr. Gene Delano, who's behind you, and from Justin Neal, who's the complainant. And he, uh, offered his testimony remotely.
Okay, so.
So we've taken that testimony and then we asked for additional testimony and there was none, so then we closed the hearing and have started our deliberations.
Okay.
We had, um, already, uh, I'll just tell you this directly. We had already concluded that, um, it, after our deliberations and from the testimony, we heard that this was a dangerous dog. And we were beginning to discuss the remedies according to the state statute.
Thank you for that information. So how are you going to fix this? So that we have a fair hearing, so that I know what Mr. Neal, if he's still on, had to say? Because this isn't fair, this isn't right. I'm here to make sure that we do it the right way and you get to the right decision the right way. So you made a mistake, how are you going to fix this?
You know what, excuse me, um.
No.
I just, I want to, I want to make it very clear to you that we have no interest in being unfair to anyone.
Okay.
All right? And it would be much more helpful if we approach this cooperatively. Because our job is to be responsible to both the dog owners and to the complainants. So what I suggest is, while it's, it's unfortunate because I know people have spent time to try to be here, I, I think what we need to do is reschedule the hearing for another date. Yeah, because we can't ask, uh, Mr. Neal is no longer on the call and we have a, an agenda that we've already posted for tonight.
Okay.
Um, and so I apologize, I know it's very inconvenient. But I think in order to be fair to you, as you're asking, and, and fair to the, um, previous people that have offered testimony, that that's the best way we should approach it.
Let me think about this for one second.
Excuse me one second, excuse me one second. I just want to check in with the rest of the board. Does anybody, um, have a, a different opinion about that? Or, um, Ms. Arrow, who is our town council, is also on the call. Do you have a, a different suggestion, uh, for how we should approach this? Or does it make sense to reschedule the hearing?
Um, I think, what, you know, whatever suits the board. I mean, you can also provide, the, the testimony that's been provided is actually, was the, the same that, that was in writing, I think, to the board. But whatever, you know, if the, whatever seems most fair to all parties is.
Uh, so, um, just to make it clear to everyone, so the letter that we received, the board received from Mr. Neal, you have a copy of that too? The email correspondence he sent to the select board?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, and that is the testimony that then he offered publicly this evening. I think you, uh, had, had some interaction with the animal control officer, Mr. Delano.
Yeah.
And what he did is he reviewed the, um, the two incidents and the, um, quarantine notices that were issued and then the temporary restraining order that was issued. So that's the, there was no other testimony offered by another party.
Okay.
So that's what we've heard. And, um, if you are comfortable, uh, with us reopening the hearing and then offering your testimony, uh, then we will close the hearing. We, we, um, may or may not be able to do our deliberations tonight, but we could at least, um, hear your testimony.
Yeah.
Would that be acceptable? Does that work for?
I've got to meet with my folks outside just for two minutes, not going to hold you up. So a couple of questions. Are you saying that he read off of his email? Oh, he read it?
Well, it, it was, I mean, he was, it was virtually the same as his email. He offered.
You could read along. Uh, as he was talking, you could read along. It was almost word for word.
And he did, he did say something at the beginning, which probably would have been good for you all to hear about how difficult this was, um, to make this statement and that, um, he knew it was going to be, you know, probably affect the relationship that he had with you all, um, where you were living on the same street. He was really, um, sorry about that.
So, did he offer any pictures, any bills?
No bills, but we do have pictures, which I think you, you may have seen as well. The pictures of the bites to his hand and then to his dogs. And then the notification of, uh, of, um, the Emerson Hospital visit. And who is it that you have with you? Is this an associate? Leah Kim, okay, hi.
Couple of questions for the board. Is his, uh, testimony recorded?
Yes, it is.
And if we reopen and, and we go, then is he going to complain that he didn't get? I mean, he, it's not like he can ask questions of, of us, right? So, um.
No, but he could come back and offer additional testimony.
He's on the call.
Oh, he is on the call?
He is on the call.
Oh, okay.
My concern is through the board that I wasn't, I mean, I understand I can't cross-examine him, but I wasn't able to ask the board to pursue any questions with him. cross-examine him, but I wasn't able to ask the board to pursue any questions with him that I might have had relative to his testimony. So how about if we take a short break, I talk to my clients and we'll come back in?
Yeah, I just want to clarify and maybe Ms. Merrill, you could respond. I don't believe that the, the hearing is intended for you to have an opportunity to cross-examine, as you said just now, someone else offering testimony. Is that correct?
That, that's right, but he, he, he mentioned that he might ask you to ask him questions.
And that's acceptable. Okay, good, just wanted that to be clear.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, we'll be right back.
Sure. Now, what time was the?
You see that?
I know we are.
Ms. Arnold, this is Justin.
Yeah, hi, Mr. Neal.
I, I would really appreciate it if I didn't have to go through the giving testimony again.
Yes.
Although I'm, you know, since it's been recorded, however, you know, I, I'm open to answering questions, but.
Okay.
This, as I, as I pointed out at the beginning of this experience, this is not something that I've undertaken lightly and I don't really want to go through it again.
Yes, we understand. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for being back on the call. We're just taking a pause now while the Topols' counsel and the Topols' talk and they'll be back shortly.
So Barney, we don't, we've cleared almost.
I'm sorry, just to butt in one more time. The, the testimony I gave today was not exactly what was in the, in the email. And I'm, and I'm very happy to give you the, the written document that I read from.
Okay, that'd be helpful. But again, as, since it's been recorded, we have that as well. But that would be helpful then, if you want to just send that electronically to Tim Goddard.
I will email it to Tim right now.
Thank you. Don't you think that would make sense to get off the governance task force and we'll have to be, I think it should be. Oh, I could swear it in there too, right? Yes. Okay, anyway, I just want to say hello. I'm sorry about the mix up. Okay, great, thanks. And are you thinking that just your lawyer will make it, will offer testimony or would either, or either what? Is either one of you planning to say something?
Yeah, I, I probably.
Okay. Yeah, no problem. So just we'll ask you to come up and say your name and address. And then also I need to swear, have you taken notice of? I'll do the same thing with your lawyer once again, which we've done with everybody, with offer testimony.
You want to say anything to Rebecca? She's on the call.
Okay, yes, I will. Rebecca, hi, this is Barney Arnold. There you are, hi Rebecca.
Hi.
This is Rebecca Viera, who's the chair of the town governance task force. Rebecca, we're thinking that we, and I apologize for this, but I, I don't know how long you've been listening, but I think we're going to run longer than, than planned. We may not get to your part of the agenda until nine o'clock or so. We're thinking we would, would you prefer to just wait and, and have a discussion with us then? Or would you prefer to come back at a, we could schedule for our next select board meeting in two weeks?
If you, let's see, hold on one second, let me look at the agenda.
Yeah, we've, we've already covered most of the other things on the agenda. So we would, we would just have you make your presentation and we'd have a brief discussion after the, this hearing ends.
If you don't feel that it would be too much time going by to have the, it happen in two weeks, then that probably would be better for me personally. I have a six-year-old that I have to put to bed, so it's kind of getting into that time.
Yes, yeah, that's no problem at all. So why don't we plan on doing that? Again, my apologies about tonight, but we appreciate your willingness to come back.
No, no, that's fine. And yeah, thank you very much for the invite and we will talk then in two weeks.
Okay, good, thanks a lot.
All right, take care.
Okay, so we, have we voted to reopen the hearing? We finished that? I thought we did, but I will do it again. Hold on, just like a busy. Don't we have to reopen the hearing first?
You did do that.
Did do that, okay, I thought we did as well. All right, so Ms. Levin, I need to ask you to, sorry, Cohen, my apologies. I need to ask you to take, to be sworn in. And you probably know this, but it's I, in your name, promise to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Okay, so a couple of things. I'm not a witness, so I can't be sworn in. The lawyers are not sworn in at these hearings. I, and I'm not going to be converted to a witness because that would disqualify me down the road if we had to go to court. Your counsel knows that. Then.
Excuse me, let, let me just confirm that with our counsel, thanks. Is that correct, Ms. Merrill?
That's fine, yes.
Okay, all right.
But to that end, we're, we will put on our part of the hearing this evening, after talking to my clients. And to do that, I, the plan is to give you a, a brief overview. At the same time, I just have to note for the record that our, you know, our letter said eight thirty and you started at seven thirty. But the intent's not to appeal, it's to get this done tonight, to show you the evidence we have. So if, we can go right into, if you want to swear witnesses, who will come up? But I'm just going to give a brief opening statement.
Yeah, that'd be fine, to go ahead and offer your statement. I mentioned to the Topols while you're out of the room that if they wanted to make, offer testimony, they could then follow you.
All right. Thank you. Not every board would respond this way, so sometimes you have to come on strong and make sure that the hearing is held right. I appreciate you doing that. So I'm here to represent the Topols because I've known them for a long time, I've known Joe for a long time. And I've had a chance to look at everything that you've had a chance to look at, plus more that you'll be, I'll share with you. So I understand that you may have already come to a conclusion based on one side of the evidence of why you have a dangerous dog here. But by the time we're done, I think this should be dismissed. And I'm going to show you why. At, at the worst, this dog is a nuisance. And what we have are two, two incidents where Justin says that in the first incident, you'll hear from our folks who, our dog got out. But Justin, he walks past this house, what, twice a day for the last, well, two and a half years at least since, since Dexter's been with us and the facts do not support a dangerous dog finding. Let's just go right there. This dog, you may have been told that this dog has bitten humans twice. So we see in the record that he says bites to humans and people. There was no human aggression.
Well, hold on, let me just clarify something. What Mr. Neal offered in his testimony was that he had been bitten. And that's what the pictures show during one incident and his dog was bitten during that same incident. And then the second incident, his dog was bitten and requiring, you know, care by a vet. So let's just, see, you know, be helpful, I think, if you would just walk through what, what you want to offer as, you know, what you think happened and why you think it's not a dangerous dog.
You can see my sense of a disadvantage because here I'm trying to respond to what you said, but I'll, I'll try to keep it to what we want to say.
Differently, you know, and close the hearing. All right, so let's move ahead then.
So there's been no human aggression here. In, in either of the incidents, a human was never the intended target. And we see that in, in the, the puncture that is on his hand. Both incidents are isolated to one dog that belongs to Mr. Neal. And my clients have been compliant with the restraining orders that have been put in place. And you've never heard a previous complaint about Dexter. And you've never heard any, any other complaints since the restraining orders have been put in. It's all targeted to this one owner and his dogs. And these were not attacks. In reading the, the statement that these were two vicious attacks, first off, neither your bylaw nor the state law defines the word vicious. So however Mr. Neal chooses to define the word, it's not, that definition is not appropriate here. These were approaches, these were not attacks. Again, you're hearing from somebody who's a pet owner, but he's not in a position to tell you the scope of these, of these bites. In the first instance, to break up a dog fight, he put his hand in the dog's mouth. He told that to my client. So our dog approaches his dog and there's an incident. But he puts his hand in our dog's mouth to get his dog free. So amazingly, Dexter doesn't chomp on his hand, he doesn't bite his hand. He cuts his hand when he's withdrawing his hand from Dexter's mouth. So here's Dexter, if he could talk right now, he'd say, wait a second. He's going to blame me for that? He's going to say that I was bit? Because it wasn't a dog bite. And when you decide to impose yourself, and pet owners do this, it's wrong. But to break up a dog fight, that's an incidental bite, that is not a sign of aggression. And that wasn't a bite. If it was a bite, we would see on both sides of the hand. If the same was in the mouth, we'd see teeth marks on both sides. This was not a bite.
Well, again, that's, you know, we're not trying to take medical testimony here. So I think you should just continue with your points about what else you think happened or how you're interpreting what happened.
Then, his testimony, Justin says that he dragged Dexter and his two dogs up to my client's house. Yet this dangerous dog didn't bite him, didn't bite his other dogs. Somehow his other dogs didn't attack our dog. And he was treated by Mr. Topol. In that instance, if I'm contending, if Justin responds differently, if he doesn't put his hand in the dog's mouth, this whole thing doesn't happen. This was, this was not a dog bite of any, any value. What was the bet though, less than a hundred dollars? I mean, Justin complained that he was in a hospital for an afternoon. If you're bitten by a dangerous dog an afternoon, you're going to be there overnight, okay? So again, I, I'm concerned that there, there really weren't pictures provided to me from incident one or bills. So this is the first I'm seeing of his hand, I believe. So I had asked in advance that there be no surprises, that I, I, I have everything in advance to review it because I would have a bite expert have looked at that picture to tell me exactly what happened. So my concern is, he's on Zoom, which means you had these already. And I haven't got a chance to look at them, but I'll move on.
Are you saying you want to continue or are you saying you want to go forward now? Well, you, you keep throwing it out there as if it's unfair.
Yeah, so we're, we're more than happy to start over again. It'll, it, I mean, I wouldn't say we're more than happy, but we are very willing to do that. And while I know it would be difficult for Mr. Neal as well as yourselves to come back, we are more than happy to do that. It's not going to be very productive to go through, you're saying the whole time, well, I haven't had a chance to do this or that.
We either need to move past that or we need to reset. I would like to reset. Okay?
Because I, I can see my attitude is just going to be, I didn't see this, so you're right. So how about if we?
We want to get to a good solution for everybody, okay? So we just have to have the right, you know, let's, let's have the right approach, okay?
Yeah, so we can put this on our agenda for two weeks from now, I believe, Tim.
We all agree right now as to what time.
Yeah, and so.
We've got a tax classification hearing that's been advertised already for seven thirty, so we wouldn't.
Let's not make it seven thirty, that didn't work out well.
Yeah. Eight o'clock would be safe, or eight thirty would be safe.
Okay.
We can't do seven thirty because it's already booked.
Yeah, so we have already scheduled a tax classification hearing for seven thirty in two weeks. But what if we, are you confident that we could say eight o'clock and that would work? Okay, so. Excuse me, oh, okay, so if that works.
Can I give a suggestion that might work? Excuse me. You could continue the hearing and allow, which would, would allow the Topols and their attorney to, you know, review the, the, the video of the testimony and, and maybe reduce, you know, the amount of time spent duplicating that.
Yeah, would that work for you?
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, good suggestion, Ms. Merrill, thank you. All right, so we will make a motion to continue this hearing to November twenty, in November twenty-third at eight PM, back in the same room. Mr. Neal, I, I know you're still on the call. Is that acceptable to you? To return and again, we'll make sure that your, the recording of your testimony is made available to the Topols and their lawyer and as well as the pictures.
I, I'm not sure whether I'm available at that time. But I, I do want to point out that I, I am not on trial here. And I feel already as though this gentleman is trying to make me out to be untruthful. And not only that, but I feel as though I'm being attacked. So I, I think that the gentleman's line of, of approach is very inappropriate for this particular hearing as opposed to trial.
Yeah, well, let me just step in here as the chair and ask that we not discuss this particular thing further. Mr. Neal, why don't you notify Mr. Goddard, our town administrator, as soon as you can about your availability for the twenty-third? And we could push it into December if we needed to. Now, that does mean that the restraining order stays in place until we do have the dog hearing, which I understand, you know, adds quite a bit of time. But so that's what we're, I guess we have to decide, we have to decide tonight. Yeah, we have to continue the hearing to a specific day, right?
I move that we continue the hearing to November twenty-third at eight o'clock.
Okay, and we can.
I don't, I'm not following that. So if Mr. Neal at a later date determines he can't attend, can we not move? Does, does, the Topols and their attorney have to show up just for the purpose of being told to show up yet again?
Not, not if we agree to it all.
Well, I know, but I'm trying to understand the envelope of what we have available to us. We cannot schedule this, we have to schedule the hearing in a public meeting?
Yes.
So again, I got to ask the question. If sometime between now and next time, Mr. Neal determines he cannot attend that meeting, what do we do?
Hopefully, hopefully he determines that he cannot come in enough time to notify us so that we can notify the other parties and that we can open and close.
But if we continue.
To another time that would then be mutually acceptable.
So is everybody following that? So if it turns out that Mr. Neal can't make it at the, on the twenty-third and we know ahead of time, then what will happen is we'll let you know. And then when it comes to that point on our agenda, we will just continue the hearing to the next available select board meeting.
May I ask, is there a time by which he can let you know so we would know?
I think there would be. I think there would be.
Yeah.
Ask Mr. Neal if he knows when he can let us know.
Yeah, Mr. Neal, is it possible to let us know in, say, the next couple of days?
I'll try, I'll try and confirm it to you this week.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. All right, so that's what we're going to do.
We have a motion on table.
Yeah, we have, you put a motion on the table.
We've had a second.
All right, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that's the plan, we will continue this hearing to November 23 at 8:00 PM. Thank you all. Good night. Yes, you may take a copy, you can take a copy of those. Yep, and this was the other piece we were given here. That's the other thing we were given right there.
This is simply packet as it is given to us.
Yeah.
Do you want to have a few to do the same work?
Okay.
Okay.
Good night.
Good night, David.
All right, so.
Dinner.
What happened to the rest of this?
Yeah.
All right, well, let's just, you know, roll our shoulders a bit and stretch a little bit, and now it's, of course.
Now we have too much time.
Plenty of time, all right. The 10 of the night. Jenny, thank you so much for being here, and.
You're welcome.
I hope you can be back on the 23rd.
Yeah, I think, I think I was, I think, are you guys doing cable then anyway?
Yeah, yeah, yes, what do you mean, but what do you mean?
Oh, because I would already be there anyway, so this is just going to add to my evening.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Have a long evening with us.
I enjoy it.
All right, thank you very much.
Talk to you soon, bye-bye.
All right, good night.
Should we, Madam Chair, should we segue into the motional calendar for the next meeting, because I don't know how.
No, we're gonna, I think we're gonna look at, touch him.
Isn't that part of his, we're on calendar now, you don't want to take it now?
What do you say, calendar?
I'm saying the agenda, since it's.
Oh, oh, yeah, we're going to the town administrator's part of this report that you didn't give yet.
So I'm suggesting in that we start with the agenda, because there's a lot of stuff in there.
Oh, for the following meeting?
Yes.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
Sounds like we're booked, we're basically booked, if we move RecCom, we're booked through 9 o'clock, at the least.
Because we have the, you know, John Fisher's request.
Well, there's that, it's not even on there, and there's RecCom, and they're going to have something, and we told Rebecca she's coming on, so I don't, we can't do all of that.
Well, we could take off municipal land needs, maybe.
Right, that's fine, it's our.
Although, it'd be nice to have, we need to get that kick off somewhere along, but not, not that night.
Hey, let me rephrase the issue.
Yeah.
The agenda, other than the things that are locked in, starts at 9 o'clock at the earliest. In other words, after cable needs assessment, which is set, tax class hearing, which is set, dog hearing, which we just set.
Right.
We move to 9 o'clock, and what we have on the table is municipal, I mean, whatever, what was it, the governance task force.
Oh, yeah, governance.
Right?
Yep.
We've got.
The police.
Police requests.
Fisher's request.
And then we start in on any of these other things that are on the.
Yeah, the select board goals.
So I would suggest we have at most half an hour, so we can do one of those things.
I don't even think we have that, to be honest.
No, I.
Go back through it, 7 o'clock.
No, I, no, I think, why don't, unless others on the board think it's worse than the five left. I think what David, you and I and Tim and Jen should have our follow-up discussion as we usually will tomorrow or Thursday, and then we can rework this.
I don't mind that, but I guess I would appreciate, because we're going to do that, I would appreciate others' opinion on what of those other things are important, because I just think there's just not enough time to do almost any of it.
So I have, I have a question, because we've rejiggered our December calendar.
Yes.
That sort of gives us an extra week if we wanted, if we, we're running out of time.
Yeah, we have that, that meeting, two in December now instead of just one.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, so as long as everybody's aware that everything makes slides to the right.
Nathan or Luke, you want to offer any comment on what you think is most important to do next week out of that kind of optional, I mean, next meeting out of the optional ones?
Doesn't matter to me, I mean, I'm fine with putting it on, and then if we don't have time, we just shift it, you know?
Okay.
Maybe something will go quick.
It would be.
Never seems to, maybe, none of the things we have suffered.
Yeah, no, but.
So I just wanted a time, please, and so Nathan, what was your comment? It'd be good to.
It would be good to make sure that we're getting the governance committee.
Yeah.
And obviously, with the two public hearings we have to do.
Right.
I do wonder when are we going to come back around and do the appointments, address the appointments to the municipal facilities committee?
Get any more applicants like that?
Because we did one, so I think technically, I think that's just in a messed up state. I think we need to figure that one out quickly.
Okay, would somebody on the board like to take responsibility for sort of coming back with a proposal? I'm not quite sure what the, what the issues are. But do we want to do that right now, or just?
Proposal.
Or about, what Nathan's raising about appointments to the municipal facilities committee?
We'd short somebody.
We have five out of seven, I think, but we have enough reform so that they can already start to meet. The possibility is we price their charter, and we have a committee of five.
So the people whose terms expired are no longer attending on it?
Are you talking, oh, municipal facilities?
Yeah, that's what he said.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was.
You're still thinking public safety?
I was talking, thinking public safety.
I don't know, I'm way past that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, everybody, there's.
We've got four, but we, I think we appointed somebody, which kind of takes away the argument that people can stay on because we weren't appointing. I think it's just in a weird state that we need to make the appointments to that committee.
Well, can I ask the two of you to try to figure out what we need to do and we could?
But I actually think we did that last time. We appointed somebody, the other person, one person was, and we appointed one person, appointed a new person.
Who would it be, current?
Christine Lear, Terry Patel, Gary Lerman, myself, and Scott Simpson. There must be somebody else.
Is there Lizzo on it?
No, he's, he's an alternate, and he entered as an alternate.
Well, I'm going to ask the two of you if maybe you could communicate outside of this meeting and see if you can sort out what, if we need to bring something to the board.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we have a full complement.
You okay with that, Nathan?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, so what I've heard is that we want to try to get the governance task force on the next meeting, and we'll try to work that out when we need to review it.
So that probably means moving Mr. Fisher, Chief Fisher.
Yeah, let's see how it plays out as we, as we go through it. All right, so for tonight, then, let us, well, while we're here, so everybody's gotten the change of dates or the way we've rearranged December, correct? So December, we have a meeting on the 7th and the 21st now is what we're being proposed. So instead of making it the 2nd and 4th Tuesday of the month, it's the 1st and 3rd to the holiday.
I wasn't aware of that change, I'm sorry.
December 1st.
It's at the bottom of this proposed agenda, and we do know.
7th?
Yep.
That was already scheduled, right?
Yeah, and, no, it wasn't. These are both changes.
The first Tuesday, so it would have been the 14th and the 28th.
Obviously, it's already scheduled for me.
And we know that that's the meeting, we're having the joint meeting with the FinCom before they issue their guidance letter in mid-December. And then the one on the 21st, we just have the 2022 license renewals, not just, but that's one of the things we know we're going to do there. Does everybody else think they can make the 7th and the 21st? Because Luke did not make the 7th.
I'm pretty sure.
Okay. All right, well, if you would let, if you can't make.
I just hope you don't make that, you know, an executive session early, because I've got a 4:45 annual meeting for another board.
On the 7th?
On the 7th, yeah.
Okay, no executive session on the 7th.
Thank you. Oh, actually, I had scheduled a 7:30, how was it, first?
Why do you go the opposite? You think we might prevail on you to switch the housing trust to the one we aren't meeting?
Yeah, I will.
Thank you.
The thing I left at this.
Thank you. Okay, let us take a look, Tim, if you're still up for it, to looking at your proposed budget, which is in our packet, along with the questionnaire that has been completed for the finance committee, and also we sent out that we provided of the, what would you call it, the technology?
Right, it's totally unreadable.
Yeah.
We have to give them any money.
Alrighty, and then also we have the comparable Assistant Town Administrator salary range, that's also included here, but why don't we, it makes sense to start with your just review of basically kind of what you presented to the finance committee, your review of the questionnaire, and then what's in your budget?
I can summarize.
Okay, that'd be great.
The FinCom, it's a relatively flat budget in comparison to the last two years. We had a fairly light year in terms of legal expenses, we overspent some categories, it all kind of balances out in the bottom line way in the end, but sometimes it's a little deceiving because, you know, one account can kind of save the budget, if you will. FinCom asked about services during COVID, I think, you know, Select Board's office has done a good job. During COVID, we were one of the first departments that came back to the building, offered services. In the meantime, Jen took over the transfer station stickers and notarizations for the clerk's office. I think, you know, I think the public is well-served by our office, certainly. I pointed out some of the known increases for next year, one of which we already talked about a bit earlier, the audit expense will be about $40,000 next year, because we'll be budgeting now for that single audit, that additional audit that we will expect because of years and ARPA and federal money. So the audit expense will go up in future years. The veterans agent services are going from $10,000 to $12,000, and that's, it's really, it's our share of the Bedford, Lexington, Carwell Veterans District. And I know some people tend to focus on, geez, we only have one veteran that's getting state benefits, and they really need a veterans agent, I think, what's generally not well-known, I guess, that there are 30 veterans and/or their spouses that are getting federal veterans benefits to the tune of about $50,000 a month, and that the veterans service officer is their advocate, you know, the person that will fight with the VA if necessary for them. And now that Gina has office hours here in the town hall, as well as being available in Lexington during the week, I think our veterans are getting better service than they ever did, it's more than we used to pay in the past, but I don't think, you know, we were serving the veterans as well, frankly, so I think that's money well spent. I'm again proposing that we add the position of Assistant Town Administrator. I think the demands on this office have increased in recent years in terms of HR functions, personnel, IT, procurement, I think we need to build some capacity in this office. Most towns have the position of Assistant Town Administrator. I pointed out to FinCom that all of our neighbors have Assistant Town Administrators, and they told me, those towns aren't good comparisons, they're all bigger than we are. It sounds like concrete, we shouldn't use them. Apparently, they're a good conference when we're talking about schools and police, and they're not such a good conference when we talk about town administration. Anyway, I did include the list of our theoretical comparable communities, the ones that we use for our salary and wage table. And you'll see that most of those towns do have the position, most of them pay considerably more than 70 to 80K, I was kind of proposing for our budget. But I just think it's a, it's a position we should consider adding. I don't know, you know, necessarily what the government task force will be proposing to town meeting. If it's a bylaw or a home rule position, it's probably not going to, you know, come to fruition for a couple of years, so it may be, maybe sometime, you know, I don't know, I don't want to wait until that sort of thing gets sorted out, but I guess we'll hear from them in a couple of weeks. I think it's also important in terms of succession planning. I know that, you know, someday the town will be hiring a new town administrator, and honestly, the position will be more attractive to applicants if they know there's some support in the term, in terms of an Assistant Town Administrator, that they won't be going, you know, the days of the one-armed paper hanger model, I think are coming to an end. I think that when people are looking for those positions, they're looking for the resources and the staff that's available. I think it helps from that sense, it also helps that you've got someone learning the position, someone who could step up someday to become a town administrator after a number of, you know, some time as an assistant. In terms of the town hall budget, we were asked to pull out utilities and expenses that might be more appropriate to a facilities budget, and I think I identified about $100,000 in expenses, although frankly, I think there are, there's more there than that even, that if the town is going to have a consolidated facilities budget, I think a lot of what's in the town hall budget could, could end up in that as well. Probably the two, the two items that sort of jump out, I think, are contracts and computer maintenance, they're both considerably, you know, overspent in terms of what we budgeted for them last year, you know, in most years. The biggest contractual item is that the annual payment for Munis, financial software comes out of the town hall budget proper, that's about $31,000. Often thought that should be part of the treasurer's budget, or in the finance area, but it's always been the town hall budget. And we may need another major update to that within a few years. I think, as you know, only the finance department uses Munis now, they're the only ones that know how to use the system, so it's kind of a, we talked about introducing it to the department so they can remotely sort of manage their budget, but that, so far that hasn't happened. We've had a lot in recent years, we have a water testing company, you know, small water systems, they do quarterly water testing here and at the library, and then they do some work for the schools as well. There's been additional testing required by DEP because something called PFAS, which is a contaminant, is in our drinking water and needs to be addressed, but also at the library, so they might be ripe to be considered for projects with ARPA funds going forward to mitigate the risk with the PFAS. Elevator maintenance is one area that we've consolidated with the schools, now we, you know, for once now, we all have the same elevator vendor, and, you know, we see some economies of scale with that. I think we had a $10,000 repair to the town hall in Flagpole last year that was unexpected as well, that is reflected in contracts. You'll see that the computer maintenance or IT expense, that's largely Drive Tech, that was about $58,000 last year. We added the IT position to the budget and advertised it, and really did not get a response to that at all. The Technology Working Group put forth the idea of expanding the services of a third-party vendor. uh, vendor, uh, and developing R F P to do that, the finance committee, uh, believes we should continue to advertise the position, this may be the first time they've ever advocated adding a full-time position to the budget, but, uh, they'd like to see us kind of go the other way, uh, and use, use those funds for, uh, the, uh, salary positions, still needs to be worked out, obviously, the, uh, technology working group is maybe, you know, later this week to discuss that, and also the, uh, we're proposing to, going forward, that, uh, the, uh, replace, uh, people's, uh, desktop systems with, uh, uh, docking stations for laptops, if they were issued a laptop during, uh, the pandemic, and we had about twenty or more people, where that was the case, we can replace, uh, their desktop unit, uh, by putting a docking station in for their laptop, it's about a thousand dollar savings per system, if we were to go at it that way, doesn't mean you have to bring a computer in from home, uh, to plug it in, but that's, seems like a small place to pay. And I also, I talked a little bit with the finance committee about, you know, I think we've got some opportunities for succession planning, uh, you know, in our land use, uh, within our land use boards, within B P W, and, you know, hopefully the timing works out with what the government task force is, uh, working on, but I, I think, you know, we've got an opportunity to make some changes going forward, uh, and, and we should, you know, take advantage of that if, if possible, uh, so that's, I guess that's kind of a rough summary of, uh, what I presented to them, the, uh, five-year replacement schedule for technology was included, uh, with that, uh, as well, I don't think what else was in the, with the questionnaire, the spreadsheet of the budget, and the, uh, capital, which was moved into the operating budget by FinCom last year, because it's not, not so much of it, it, uh, capital expenses, uh, and operating costs, and, and they did the same thing with the, uh, school department technology, that that's part of their operating budget, it's not a capital, uh, expense from year to year. So that, that was the, the budget that I presented to them a couple of weeks ago, so, uh, I've got to get back to Jim Dar about the, uh, assistant town manager position, and I said, well, I'm going to present this to the board, and we'll see if that's a viable, uh, alternative after Tuesday, and, uh, so it, it may or may not be part of the budget, I do think it's needed, uh, but I realize that the timing, there's always an issue with, uh, adding things to the budget, so, any questions?
Well, I'm, uh, an enthusiastic supporter of the, uh, assistant, uh, town administrator slot, personally, I think there's a lot of things that need to be done, um, but I don't know when you would ever have a chance to do them, I think, because of everything that we've already put on your plate, um, I just, by the way, we're never going to let you leave, so
Yeah, yeah.
Succession planning is out.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, I, I, you know, I, I think the H R piece is, is
Oh, yeah, I think it's not big enough against the piece of it.
It is, and if, if we, you know, we've been talking about doing merit, and, and we need an H R, somebody who's really, uh, in there that, you know, can be directing and pushing in the, um, evaluations, making sure they're being done and done correctly, and, to help with all that.
If we're going to take on the overhead of, you know, benefits and everything of a new position, I think it's more important to have an administrator, assistant administrator than a tech person.
Well, at the end of the day, too, the tech person, I mean, if we spend fifty-eight thousand, right, you're not going to get somebody to run it at seventy, or anything. So even if we increase that budget, or I, I, I don't know, I just, I mean, it'd be great to have somebody in house, but at, at the cost that I think we would get somebody out.
And in fact, we, we were saying we were going to increase that budget with that money that was given toward the position.
Yeah, no, but I, I, I think it's just pushback on, on FinCom.
Yeah, well, wait, let's, let's back it up, because, right, so, a year ago or more, we authorized a hundred thousand in each position, right?
Right, that was, that was requested, right.
And we didn't, we budgeted that, and we got nobody, and we
Well, what if we pass a town meeting though?
That got knocked down.
Down to seventy-five.
Final budget got knocked down to seventy-five.
And part of the thinking was that there'd be some savings from what we were paying to Drive Tech.
It moved over, yeah.
It moved over.
So where is the, in your budget, where's the, is, computer maintenance, is that what we pay Drive Tech?
That Drive Tech comes out of that, yeah.
So you're only proposing twenty-five, but in fact, we pay them like sixty?
That's what's been budgeted historically.
And is that what they're using now, only twenty-five?
Last year, they, they spent fifty-eight.
No, I know, but this year, it says twenty-five, and next year, you're proposing twenty-five, so that assumes an IT person?
Yeah, that assumes that, that we either, well, either the position or we've modified that.
Right, but I mean, as you stand right now, you're saying an IT, twenty-five to Drive Tech and seventy-five for a person, if we could get that person.
If we could do that, or, or we'd expand that to twenty-five?
Or we'd expand that, and that was a discussion, and I think Nathan had offered to talk to Drive Tech, did they end up talking?
They already had started that.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we're having conversations with them.
And then we agreed we would R F P it.
Right, we'd have it, right.
So then the mosquito, so that's the IT, then the mosquito reported that you told FinCom, I think, if I remember accurately, that the IT position was more important than the A T A position.
Well, I think that, uh, yeah.
You missed that?
No, I, I, I did say that, although I, I, frankly, I didn't think I had, should have to choose, I mean, they don't have
Now, that's the next question.
Other departments, you know, which one's your route of?
I know, but somehow, there was an either-or question, and however.
I, I, I said I'd like to solve the IT position first, we funded it first, and then, yeah, so in terms of time.
But it sounds like really the right answer is, from what I'm hearing, is, the IT thing is that we don't yet know if that's a person or a service, so
Right.
Let's let that go on its course, now we're talking about a new position that we generally agree isn't necessary.
Right, yeah, they're not, it's not either or, right.
Right, and so I just want to be clear, I was not suggesting that we not do that role, I was just saying from a priority of people, I wasn't saying we pull that money back, we need that money for tech support.
Right, but I, I want, I think we agree, I want to make sure Jim Dar and company understand that.
Yeah.
Again, I'm only going with what I read in the paper, I wasn't at the hearing, but when FinCom says they support it, do they support it in, in front of an IT or as another position?
The FinCom did not support, they, they didn't say they supported it.
They, they support the, an IT position.
They do support the IT, they, they've not weighed in on the A T A.
No, not yet, no.
Correct, right.
We're, it sounds like we're saying
Be a position.
Yeah.
We support exploring on A T A.
Yeah, okay.
Well, this suggests that it's for, oh, but maybe it should be, yeah, advertised like at Indeed and various other places.
Oh, okay, but, I mean, that's
Getting an IT person for seventy-five.
For their
Well, um, I, you know, here's my, um, I, in just taking this all by itself, the idea of an assistant town administrator, um, you know, seems, um, definitely worth considering, but I, I'm thinking about the other departments that have asked for additional staff and the fact that we have, you know, made sort of some, some starting efforts in terms of the land use functions to think about how you might reorganize that, and then we have the town governance committee, and I understand, Tim, you know, your concern about, you know, how long will it take them to come back with proposals, but I am reluctant to commit us to, um, another, you know, full-time position in the town hall budget, um, at the same time that we're looking at, you know, additional hours or even additional staff in other departments, and I'd, um, I, I'm not quite sure how we get there, but I wish we could be looking at it holistically and saying, you know, if you, if you restructured, if, if you reorganized or potentially restructured the, the town hall functions, is there a way to, um, do this more, uh, effectively, efficiently with, and not have to hire as, as many different positions as are being requested currently?
That's where we need the government.
And then, but, so the dilemma is, you know, with the need is right now, and, you know, how long can we wait for the governance task force, and in fact, are they even really addressing this at the level we're talking about, so I guess we'll know more when they come, give us their update, right, in two weeks, um.
I have to say, uh, in terms of supporting the other, um, departments that are asking for hours, um, I'm, I'm feeling frustrated about the, the IT part because I think that would have gone a long way towards supporting some of the functions that they're doing, and that would, that would have then maybe taken some of the pressure off of them, you know, so I feel like, um, you know.
Right, could you, could you, if you've got techno, if you use technology more effectively, and could it reduce the hours of work, uh, and therefore reduce the need for more hiring and more hours?
Right, so, it was, again, that's another case of it, you know?
Right.
Trying to support the staff, um.
But, I mean, the bigger, I agree with that, but I think the bigger issue that Barney is alluding to, we, this is a pretty important thing, actually, that I think we're going to have to consider next meeting, when we meet with Rebecca, that we had a lot of small group meetings to create the, prepare to create the going, that's, and then we agreed that Wayne Davis would put that together, and he would do that more or less independent of select board oversight, and he figured that out, okay, so, so far, so good, but then I think they were launched without, deliberately launched without guidance from us, the people that met in the small meetings to kind of think about these kind of issues, like land use consolidation, I don't know that we specifically identified assistant town administrator, but we looked at the HR function of the town administrator, I mean, we, we looked at those things, and I guess, I don't have insight into what they're doing other than the presentation that's in our packet this time, that we were hoping to hear about, but it sure doesn't seem like they're going in that direction, so, um, I guess my feeling, since they seem to be in this state of gathering, is that we, we have a, it's incumbent on us next time to kind of give that vision of what we want them to spend their time on, I, I don't know if that's consistent with Wayne's, because Wayne was like, kind of made it sound like hands-off, you know, they'll present to you, they'll present to town meeting completely independently, so, but oversight, but we have some very specific things that we're hoping will be addressed through this process, and I don't know whether they're lined up that way, so, I guess that's all for the, the two.
I don't think they are.
I think they are, so.
No, I, I, I think they're, they're sort of, like, they choose their own path.
And so they can, and they can, but if their path, and this is, I guess, wrapped back to the A T A, if their path ends up being some completely different path, that's their right to do that, but that would still leave us with an unmet need of restructuring the town hall.
Right. I guess we can't answer that till we hear from them, but if that is the case, then we have to take that on, because they didn't want
I agree.
That goes right back to whether we hire, and what does that town administrator do?
Well, it, it, um, I think this is helpful in terms of our, when they're back in two weeks, um, that we need to be clear about something we would like them to be looking at, and, or ask the question, are you looking at this, and then why we think would be a helpful thing to look at, then depending on their response, we can figure out where
We should dust off our goals and plan, point them to those particular, again, they don't report to us, so
Correct.
Our goals are not their goals, but they should be aware of that.
And I think they want their input, from my understanding, from talking to, um, a couple of the members, they definitely want input from people that are in leadership roles, um, but they do see themselves as working independently, um.
So can, I want to leave that, and can I ask, just, I want to ask two other questions, and one, it's sort of a simple dumb one, I, and I'm not, it's my fault for not being aware of this stuff, but the, the M F C, does it have its own budget, or is it all tucked in here?
The facilities manager is in the town hall budget, right.
And, and then there's some line item of travel, but the actual
All the, all the expenses are in the individual departments, the utilities, there's talk of bringing those all together.
But, but the, the person, so if it was all brought together, so would the facility manager.
That would, that would be part of it as well.
And now, is, because the school, he left already, or he's leaving?
December.
December, yeah.
December.
Is there going to be this joint one then?
That, uh, we're, we're talking with Jim about that, it's, it's, it's an opportunity, obviously, with the
If you have kind of a halftime in here, right, it's not a full-time, it doesn't
The facility manager
Current facility manager is part-time.
Forty-seven, seven.
And so if it went to a shared full-time, you'd have a piece and school would have a piece, or would it be just a certain thing now?
It, uh, it hasn't really been flushed out, you know, I, I suspect that whoever's the facilities manager at the school is going to be the overall head of the facilities department, but
School's saying they need a little more.
They would need to have some more mon, uh, school needs a little more money than to backfill whatever, uh, hands-on things that the current, you know, their current position is doing that they would no longer be able to do.
This part-time position would go away, in that
No.
It, it would, no, it would still exist, I think, it would just be a, the under-facilities manager town wide, it'd be
Oh, okay, so it wouldn't be one person that's, what's his or do, it would be a facilities manager at school that has oversight over the town building.
Yeah, but I think you'd still need someone in the town building.
Probably need an, the way Jim has been talking about it, probably he needs another custodian in his budget.
I understand, yeah, Jim made that point, right.
Yeah, okay, um, but this guy, this facility manager still stays here for the town, but would report to the new
Overall.
Overall facilities department, okay.
And my last question is the color chart, just from a top, I don't want to get into the weeds of it, but, you know, mostly you replace the older ones, you're on some cycle, right, it doesn't look like it's as rigid as a school has, like, a pretty rigid five, four, five-year cycle, but you got some
You said no.
You have some from two thousand and twelve, you have some from two thousand and fifteen, but then when, when the red ones, where you're swapping, what happens, are the old, if you, you issued a bunch of people laptops?
Yeah.
And then the desktops, they no longer use our conquerors, I mean, they just going to go away then, is that what this is trying to say, or?
Well, they, they have, when they're here, they use the desktop, when they're remote, they use the laptop, when their desktop is, comes up in the schedule, we're talking about replacing that with the docking station for the laptop.
Why not just go do that like right away, like, why wait?
I know, it's the technology group's meeting this week to talk about the policy.
We're talking about this, that this week, and we're trying to figure out, like, what happens with this and going through this in detail, like, some people, some people whose computer could get replaced because they have a laptop, it's still a really great computer, so we may not replace somebody else's computer under
I mean, it goes somewhere else, but I mean, if I'm used to now using my laptop at home, because that's what I got during the pandemic, I don't have to go turn that up, they have no way right now bringing their laptop into the office and making it the workstation when they're here?
They, they can bring it in, but they already have a computer on their desk, so we want to take that computer off their desk and put a docking station, yeah.
And, and some of these are
That same monitor that they
Right, and they're different vintages, but I guess, I presume, because most of them look pretty, I don't know, I don't mind that, the, the dates here, the dates of the desktop that would be replaced, or the laptop that replaced it?
The dates in this?
Yeah, the red, they look like twenty-one, so they're probably new laptops, right? You're not buying new desktops right now, are you?
No.
Last contact.
Which, which date are you referring to?
Well, I'm saying there's an installed, there's, there's a, only one place where there's a date.
Yeah, that's last contact, that you can't, that, that could be yesterday.
Yeah, so that doesn't mean anything, that doesn't speak to the age of the equipment.
Nope, there's the, there's the system install date?
Yeah, that one.
But that, don't, don't trust that.
Don't trust that, okay, so it's, I can't really draw any conclusions from you.
No.
But basically, I mean, that was the clue, you're not buying, that, we're, we're kind of out of a desktop business, right?
I think we want to get out of the desktop business wherever we
Those are my questions, thank you.
All right, I have a question for you, Tim, on the budget, uh, the town hall and general expenses, so what I'm trying to, you've got your F Y twenty-one actual expenditures, but I don't, is, am I missing it, is there a total for what that was?
No.
Yeah, that's actually what I was going to ask.
Okay, because I was trying to understand, I wanted to be able to compare that. Okay, because I was trying to understand, I wanted to be able to compare that to then the fiscal year twenty-two budgeted, right?
Right, you'd have to add the whole.
What that total is and then trying to under, look at what the, what your new proposed budget is. Do you have a?
I do have that, I just, I cut it off, I think on this sheet, I can, I can get that to you.
Do you can see from? Know what the percentage increase is from?
Or, or decrease.
Or decrease, that's true, that's true.
It's just a percent or two currently, but I didn't put in the, you know, the position or, you know.
That's what I was going to ask you, so you don't have in here, you don't have in here an assistant town administrator salary that you're proposing in your budget? That was just in your narrative, okay? And in here though, you do have just this, you have the, the IT, the seventy-five thousand? Is that in here somewhere?
Where is it?
I don't see it.
I didn't see it.
Town hall budget?
Okay, town hall budget.
You mean under, let's see, under wage or?
No, we're not seeing it.
No, not in there. Not in any facility, I was just saying.
We have part-time wages.
Oh, no, there is contracted services?
No, that, that wouldn't be contracted. Oh, but my dear, it does say seventy-five K.
I know, but.
Oh, maybe because you're thinking that goes in as consultant? That's the, for drive tech?
That's where it is right now, yeah. But it, it could be applied to a provision.
So you, so the.
Could be a consultant, okay.
So where is that?
Contracted services could be a position.
Gotcha.
So you have a placeholder of seventy-five, which you haven't spent.
Okay.
Right, and you put it, and you, and then you put it into the budget. So, I mean, I think the main thing, I agree with you Barney, that it should have been, we should have done the totals, but if you look across the department totals.
Yeah, you can kind of see.
Pretty modest increase.
Right, okay.
Without the ATA.
Without the ATA and you're thinking you'd put the ATA, well, if we look at your comparables, you're thinking you ought to do it at, what did you think? You can put it in as, here's the comparable, yeah. Yeah, because these are.
That's what we're buying.
They have procurement. So Boxborough is seventy to eighty-five.
Yeah, and they're, they're usually pretty good.
Yeah.
Model for us. Well, I'll put that, I mean, I'll, I'll revise the budget and, and I'll include the, the totals, see if it's true.
So remind me of the process, do you, would you first do a job description for personnel to?
Yeah, it would, yeah, there's, there's interest in going forward with it.
We would, we would give you the green light to interest.
Yeah, to go to personnel.
Draft a job description and have the personnel board.
They grade, they.
Grade it.
Grade it.
Yeah.
So that would.
And then you, that would speak to what, you know, what the, the baby end would be.
Right.
And then you can put that in and then ThinkCom would have to approve that.
Including it in the budget, right.
Right.
Right, Jim has asked about that already.
So back to timing, if the governance, I mean, we, I think we recognize a need, but as you say, it's not a complete picture because we don't know what reorganization stuff might come out of government.
I think we have to act as if it's not happening. Because otherwise we'll driver sounds nuts. That's what we did with the master plan and then it went in totally different direction and left us high and dry. It would have, so.
Um, Tim, I know we've talked about this before. Do we have any sort of fairly up-to-date town hall chart of the various positions and who reports to whom?
The organizational chart or?
Yeah.
But yeah, we, we've got one, maybe a year old, but yeah, I can find that for you.
You put it on eleven by seventeen P O.
Yeah, it's like a mile wide and inch deep, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
It hasn't worked like at home.
Yes. Yeah, because maybe we need to tackle that ourselves if we don't think we've got the right.
To do with the, with the personnel and with the first, with the director of personnel. We've been trying to put people, the, they call it the chain of command this way and through the personnel procedures.
Right, right, right. I think, right, I think we should wait to see what they come up with and if they're not going that way like you said today, we've got to re-.
Yeah, it, it can always be redone, you know, I mean, because no matter what, you know, if there's a reorganization, there's a reorganization. At least you've got the positions to reorganize. If you don't have the positions, you know.
And it's also, you know, it's kind of a living document in that, I don't, my own view is, you know, I don't, I wouldn't see us saying, okay, here's the new organizational chart for town hall and we're going to implement this as of this date, which means you, your job now is going to change to this and your job is going to change to this. And in fact, this person, you know, is not going to be rehired, whatever, right? It's going to be sort of, my view would be it's, you know, as people choose to retire or leave, that you have in mind a way to, you know, restructure things. Or if you have a department like the COA where you have a new director who then takes a look at their own, you know, staff and structure and does their own reorganization, great. But it, you know, it would be something that would happen over time.
Yeah.
Yeah, the problem though, I have to say, I think in Tim alluded to it in his foot, and we talked about it a year ago or more, so like what, see, what Joan's doing, taking over and rejiggering, that's great because it's sort of self-contained.
Right.
When we talk about the retirement of, of the town planner and, you know, some coming up retirements and some slots in town, including, you know, D W eventually and all these things, where we know these are coming.
Yeah.
If we leave it to each department, they'll sort of rejigger their own image again.
Right, right.
I don't, I think we have an opportunity now.
I agree.
To look because of the demographic of this more senior leaders in that, in government, to, to recreate the job descriptions. And as that relates to ATA, it's kind of the same. I think it's incumbent on us to set that up so whoever we hire has a clear expectation of make, you know, where the future is going. So I think it takes a fair amount of work.
Yeah, I do too.
I don't think we can just passively wait for this.
And in fact, this is, by the way, for the maintenance department, it's the same sort of thing. We have an opportunity here and the idea is not to do it all, you know, bang, you know, full-blown, but we'd be looking for, Jim and Tim would be looking for somebody that would then.
Right, well, they have an opportunity now.
They had the opportunity and they would know that this is the direction the thing is going to be, that they would be expecting to bring everything into, and, you know.
Right, and they were, they seem aligned on that objective, so. An IT, I would put the same, I mean, we either go to a service model or we have somebody in the division. So I, I think we've got it, I don't know when we have time to do this, but we really have to take a step back and kind of look at that whole canvas. Again, I want to wait, I don't want to steal the governance committee's thunder because they may have to my ear.
Yeah. All right, well, I think unless others have something they want to say on this, I think, I want to ask, is it the sense of this board that we want to, while not ready to, you know, sign off on the dotted line, but we are thinking it's worth having Tim move this to a personnel board?
I would, I would, I propose that you write a job description that we edit this in this discussion and then the, we'll get away with it.
And it, and it would have something about HR, but I think it has other things in it as well, right?
Definitely, which you also mentioned.
It does allow the comparable to towns here.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, because.
And HR.
And, and some of the procurement stuff I think could be going to the, some of, some procurement will be going to facilities. That would hopefully take something. And so just give you then the time to do, I mean, basically, most of our staff are, were, are so overloaded with stuff that they can't do that forward planning and strategic thinking that they'd like to do for the, for the town. And I'm hopefully, I'm hoping that that gives you, yeah, and they're the ones that are closest to the problem. People that are closest to the problem are the ones that need to be the ones that are driving the change. Okay.
All right, so does that sound good to you, Tim, that you draft the job description? Bring it back and then we'll offer our input and then it can go forward to personnel from there if it, that still makes sense? Okay.
And personnel is leading, hopefully?
More or less.
More or less.
But the rule still applies, I think, that if they don't.
If they don't, you, you're the one that's right back.
To Tim, who grades his decision.
So that's good. I just want to make sure that that rule is still in place.
Okay, I think we have completed the work we've, well, most of what we were, well, some of what we were hoping to do tonight. You know, I didn't ask, I didn't ask Justin Neal, but what, whether, what his notification said about what time the hearing started. I don't know how that happened.
I don't know.
You know, I did see in the packet, you know that.
Responsibility for it. I did sign that letter and it said eight-thirty, but.
Yeah.
I think all of our other information said seven-thirty, so it was just unfortunate.
Because I, you know, in the packet, that was, I noticed the motion to open the hearing said eight-thirty. I don't really remember that, yeah. No, this was the one, this draft that I saw and so I sent it back.
I don't know if we ever changed the time, I can't remember, but I, I should have caught that.
Yeah, but anyway, okay. In any case, I think we are ready, unless someone wants to offer any comments before we do, that we're ready to adjourn.
And we adjourn, right?
All those in favor?
All right.
All right, we are adjourned at nine forty-two P M. Look at that, just seven.